Okay, we will call this meeting of the Loma Linda City Council to order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Councilman Leonard.
Here.
Councilman Daley.
Here.
Councilman Papescu.
Here.
Mayor Protem Freiduper.
Present.
Mayor Rigsby.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. We had a closed session at six o'clock and we have a report from our legal counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council was in closed session on the item listed on the agenda. City Council received a report and there was some discussion but no action to report at this time. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Next is our invocation, pledge of allegiance led by our Mayor Protem Duper. Please stand.
Please bow your heads. Dear Father in Heaven, we ask that you come into this room and watch over us as we are presented with decisions and make choices for this community. We thank you for the season and we, as a council, pray that blessings be bestowed on all the members of our community and those present with us here tonight. We thank you for all that you've promised in your name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any added or deleted items?
No, sir.
I have one request from the public to speak and we'll start with Dennis Green.
Ladies and gentlemen, thanks for your time. I've been here before. My name's Dennis Green. I live on Scotch Lane in Ritchie Canyon and my concern is off-roading in your South Hills Preserve. With the summer, there wasn't too much traffic. The heat kept people out. With the cooler weather now, there seems to be a lot more traffic. My big concern right now is fire. It seems like there's little or no enforcement of the rules back there. I haven't seen anything. I'm out there pretty much three or four times a week. Bike rides go out there. They ride over the place and nobody checks to see if they got spark arresters, whether they're building fires or partying back there. And it's dry. It's, I've never seen it this dry. And there's quite a bit of brush out there. At one time, I was real concerned by my house and they kind of came out and blocked access. But in the meantime, I've looked at other places and there's places where four-wheel vehicles can easily access there. And I see four-wheel vehicles back there quite a bit. With four-wheel vehicles, it's a different problem. One of the things I've been noticing is a lot of illegal dumping. There's a boat haul back there now. There's mattresses, there's piles of trash.
Can you be a little more specific when you say "back there"?
South Hills Preserves.
I know, South Hills, but that's a lot of acreage.
Yeah, well, I walk all through there and this is through, the majority of what I'm talking about is probably on the west end, the side that borders into Colton.
Over by Ritchie Canyon.
By Ritchie Canyon, that's where I live, in Ritchie Canyon. So, there's a lot of illegal dumping. Also, there are at least four man-made jumps for motorcycles back there. Those jumps are made to see how high you can go. I don't know what kind of liability the city has, but it's just a matter of time somebody's out there and hurts themselves with a crash also. If they fall over, there's again the fire issue. So, I'm here tonight just to kind of remind you that there's still an issue out there. I see no, again, I see no kind of enforcement or any kind of thing from you folks to try to mitigate that. It's a big concern of mine.
You've articulated a problem.
Yes.
What solutions are you recommending? And then we do need to deal with budget as well.
Okay, well, one of the recommendations would be to try to limit access. There are some barriers put up, but they've been breached. Maybe go out and try to, at least, I know you can't keep the motorcycles out of there. They can go anywhere they want to go. But four-wheel vehicles, if you block some of them roads, it can keep the four-wheel vehicles out. The other thing I think about is, I don't know this for sure, but I'm pretty sure you guys got a bike patrol that goes around every so often. If they went out one or two weekends a month and did a bike ride through there and enforced the rules, if they busted a couple people, I would imagine the word would get around pretty quick that that wasn't a place to be riding their motorcycles.
Do we have bike patrol?
No, sir.
I didn't think of that.
Okay. I've seen them. I didn't know if they were in Colton, I mean, in Colton or... But even just have somebody out there walking, spending some time. Weekends seem to be the worst. Evenings, people go out, but if you guys patrolled on the weekends, send somebody out there and let them walk around for a couple weekends a month, that would probably limit quite a bit and then they could see exactly what's going on. I've never seen anybody out there from the city of Colton or the city of San, or the county of San Bernardino. And I spend quite a bit of time out there. That's why I do my walking and exercise, so... But I've never seen any kind of enforcement at all. And that's been at least about three years I've been doing it. So, thank you again.
We thank you for your reports on what's going on down there.
And you asked a question. I got a little now.
Oh, thank you.
This is your South Hills Preserve. This is Scotch Lane, right there.
Yeah.
And these are like the access points where it seems like the four-wheel drive vehicles are coming in and these are some of the jumps and dumps.
I actually think this is in the job description for the mayor, so we'll try to make this work.
Jump tester?
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to make a comment that's not included in any agenda items? Okay, no takers. Then we will move on to our first agenda item, which is a presentation on the occasion of his retirement to Fire Prevention Inspector Jim Shea. I've got your little listing of what you've been doing over the last 22 years.
When I think about it, I get real tired.
Yeah. So, September of 1995, you were hired as a parking enforcement officer. That's probably one of the hardest jobs. And then you took even the harder job, which is, in 2000, you were promoted to, or transferred, whether it's a promotion or not, we'll find out, but to code enforcement officer. So, you're good at soaking up objections to government...
Correct.
Intervention. There's a lot of abuse that goes with those two jobs. And then 2007, you were transferred, promoted to Fire Prevention Inspector, which is where most of us know you from. And you did that for about 10 years and you're planning to retire. I don't know why.
Yeah.
But you live in Loma Linda.
Yes.
Which we really appreciate to have people working for us that live here and others, but it's especially nice if someone lives here, they have a sense of ownership. You have two sons and some grandchildren?
Yes.
And on the occasion of your retirement, because you've been with us for a while, I think we have an item to give you.
The lamp?
The special lamp. If you stayed another 50 years or so, you'd get a rocking chair.
Mr. Mayor, I should probably also point out, I know you kind of highlighted each of those roles being somewhat thankless. I will tell you that the manner in which Jim conducted his duties in each of those roles, absolutely faithful and without failure every time. He's one of those people you can count on and you know how he's doing business every single day. And I don't think he cut a corner in 22 years, so... We, I think, you see a crowd of suppression firefighters here that also respected how he did his business on the prevention side. So, speaks volumes to you, Jim. Thanks for your service.
It makes their job a lot easier.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, you mentioned that I live here and that's been great because I can walk to work sometimes and the downside is you're chopping at Stater Brothers with people you just took to court or you towed their car and you're ducking down the aisles and you don't want to see them and they say, "Hey, you towed my car. I go to church with you." Pay your tickets. But, thank you. It's been a huge privilege and honor to serve the city of Loma Linda these past 22 years. I have been very fortunate to have worked with some incredibly amazing coworkers and in all departments. They really are true public servants in the best sense, people who work with passion and integrity and creativity and talent. You know, this was my second career. I had a career in the pipeline construction business for about 18 years. I still recall the first day on the job as a parking control officer with a badge on my shirt and going down the street in this little three-wheel scooter. And I hated it and it leaked when it rained and I got soaking wet. And I remember thinking to myself, "How did I get here?" You know? And I remember one time I had pulled up to Anderson and Barton Road in that little blue and white three-wheel scooter and I had the door open, it slid open, and there was a mom and a little kid standing there in the corner. And the little boy goes, "Look, Mom, a Lego car." I need something with more respect here. A few years later, I actually did get a vehicle with four wheels under me and I was very thankful. I guess in large part, I have to thank Chief Gene Brooks, who took a chance on me all these years ago. And there were others along the way through the years of code enforcement and 10 years of fire prevention. I want to mention my predecessor, Jerry Patterson. Not sure if anybody remembers him, but he was an invaluable mentor to me through these, through the years. Of course, working with Jamie Gray and now the last couple of years with Tim Bradfield, it's just been the very best it could have been. It's just been amazing. And I learned so much from those guys and I got free coffee from Tim every morning, so that was good. I also want to thank Chief's father, Don Bender, who was also in a great way one of my mentors as I began doing annual inspections at the Med Center and university buildings. He just, he had all the answers. He knew everything. He taught me a lot from the helipad to the basement. He knew how everything worked. And so, I was very grateful that I had someone like that to learn from and, you know, that basement was just something... 10 years later, I'm still getting lost down there. Anyway, I want to especially thank Chief Bender for all his support through the years. You know, the fire service family is an incredible thing to see and a privilege to be a part of. And through good times and bad, they are always there for you. I also want to thank Chief Bender for not putting a hit out on me. I know I was thinking about it a couple times. Anyway, I wish you all the best. Thank you for all the great memories and in me, you will always have a lifelong champion for the great city of Loma Linda. Thank you.
Says Jim Shea, Fire Prevention Inspector, September 1995, October 2017. Okay, now we will be calling in to order the housing authority so that we can have a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority to receive our audit and
Mayor Council Members, I would like to present our auditors. Brianna Schultz.
Okay. She's the manager of the audit job and she'll be doing the presentation for the auditors and then I'll have Sonia Fabella, our accounting manager, do the presentation for the city.
Thanks, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Thank you for having us this evening. Again, I'm Brianna Schultz. I was the supervisor on the audit engagement with the city. So, I'll keep it quick here. So, I'm just going to go over, just highlight some responsibilities on our behalf and the cities. So, the city's responsibility, which includes the Finance Department, is to present the city's financial position and results of the operations fairly and in conformity with GAAP, which is a generally accepted accounting principles. Adopt sound accounting policies and procedures. Provide reasonable accounting estimates. Establish and maintain internal controls over your policies and procedures and prevent and detect fraud. Rams, as the auditors, our responsibilities include obtaining reasonable assurance that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and that's reasonable, not absolute assurance. We examine on a test basis evidence supporting the amounts and disclosures. We assess the accounting principles used, estimates, and evaluate the overall financial statement presentation. During our testing, we also review city internal controls, policies, and procedures, and ultimately we express an opinion on the city's CAFR or financial statements. And our opinion, in short, so everything was presented fairly in all material respects. All significant accounting policies were consistently applied. Estimates all appeared to be reasonable and disclosures were all properly reflected. We ultimately issued what is called an unmodified or a quote-unquote "clean" opinion, so we had no findings, no disagreements with management, et cetera. So, like, yeah, other key points, exactly. So, we have no disagreements with management, no material errors or regularities that we discovered during our testing, and no significant accounting issues were discovered. So, I would like, before I forget, to thank Sonia and Diana greatly for your patience and help through this audit process. You guys are always a pleasure to work with and thank you very much. And I'll take any questions if anyone has one. Okay, I'll leave it to Sonia. Thank you.
I will be going over the financial statements in a summarized format. I'll be going over the financial statements in a summarized format. We're going to go over our comprehensive annual financial report, which we call a CAFR for short. We're going to go over the introductory, or the CAFR is made up of three sections, the introductory, the financial, and the statistical section. The statistical section is not audited and the financial section is what we will be mainly focusing on. We will go over the financial statements of the city. We will also include the Loma Linda Housing Authority, which is presented as a special revenue. And we will also see the Successor Agency, which is a private purpose trust fund. The financial statements are presented in two ways. One way is the full accrual basis of accounting within the government-wide statements and they report the city as a whole. They include the long-term debt and capital assets and they eliminate internal balances such as transfers in and out, advances, and due-to-do forms. The second way is the modified accrual basis of accounting presented in the fund financial statements and they report the most significant funds.
Can you speak into the microphone a little more? I'm having a difficult time understanding.
Okay. Can you hear me now? Is this okay? Here's a recap of the net position as a whole.
That's better. That's better. Thanks.
This is the beginning net position for the governmental activities and the business type activities. We started the year with, for the governmental activities, with $106 million and business type $30 million. They each had a net change in position that was negative of $2 million and that gave us a total of $134 million. The next page goes over the governmental and business type activities, a breakdown of the net position. $54 million is the governmental portion that is invested in capital assets. There's a restriction of $34 million, which is mainly $15 million for street improvements and $17 million for Housing Authority. And then the remaining is $15 million for unrestricted. The business type activities is $35 million invested in capital assets, $760,000 is restricted mainly for debt service, and an unrestricted negative amount of $7 million. That gives the total net position for the business type of $29 million. In this slide, we see the total cost of city services net of program revenues. This shows the cost to run governmental activities such as general government, public safety, community development, and public works exceed program revenues by $14 million. Program revenues consist of charges for services, capital, and operational grants. For the business type activities, costs exceed revenues by $1,870,000. The funds include, included in this business type activities are the water operations and capital, the sewer, and the Loma Linda connected communities. When we offset the cost of general revenues of $14 million, we have less of a change in net position. The change comes down to $2.1 million. General revenues here include taxes, intergovernmental revenues, investment revenues, miscellaneous revenues, and transfers between governmental and enterprise funds. In fiscal year 2016, we had a large extraordinary item of $28 million due to the litigation between the city and the OF and re-entered the loans between the city and successor agency to the redevelopment agency. This is a recap of the fund financial statements. This is the general fund balance and $29 million is non-spendable in 2016. The difference of, is, the difference is due to the fire truck that was set up as a prepaid because it hadn't been delivered yet. The committed amount of $5.5 million is the rainy day reserve and then the assigned fund balance is made up of capital equipment replacement funds mostly. And then the unassigned fund balance is $6.5 million. So, the total fund balance is $13.5 million. And this is the general fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance. For 2017, revenues were $18 million. Expenditures were $490,000 more than the revenues. And then other financing sources were $584,000, which were mainly transfers in and out. The result of operations gave a positive fund balance of $94,000. That added to the beginning balance of $13 million and increased it to $13.5 million. The general fund budgetary comparison, this compares the original fund balance, I'm sorry, the original budget to the final budget. The final budget includes any budget adjustments that were done during the year and then it compares it also to the actual amounts that were, that occurred during the year. There's a variance over on the right for revenues. It's a positive variance of $462,000. Almost half of that variance is overhead coming in higher. There's about $30,000 for an ENPG grant for disaster preparedness and permits came in higher by about $73,000. The expenditures were less than what the final budget was, I'm sorry, they're less than the original, I mean, the final budget by $885,000. And it includes the general government, a savings of $394,000 for unemployment benefits that were not paid out. There was not as much legal expense and then there was also operational savings. For public safety, there was also $101,000 of a savings that included mostly fire and police savings and operations. For community development, there was a $45,000 savings for public works, $124,000, and then for capital outlay, $219,000. And the capital outlay was a delay in vehicle purchases that will happen in 2018. This is a summary of changes in net position for the business type activities. It, the business type activities are made up of water acquisition, water enterprise, sewer capital, and connected communities. There's a, the 1.2 negative that you see there, that is due to capital transfers that were done from water acquisition into water enterprise fund. And then the sewer capital had a negative $32,000 and the Loma Linda connected communities was a negative $662,000. And that's due to revenues, not offsetting expenditures, although the change this year was a little bit better because the charges for services increased a little bit. The extraordinary, extraordinary item that you see there for $7.5 million in 2016 was again due to the recognizing of the loans from the successor agency and former RDA. This is a statement of fiduciary net position and this is mainly the successor agency. The assets for, the $25 million in assets that you see there is land held for resale of $6.2 million and advances to the city of $15.8 million. I'm sorry, from the city. Deferred outflow of resources, that's a gain on the refinancing of the debt, and the liabilities of $47 million are made up of bonds and loans to the city. The reduction in negative position will continue through the ROPS as payments are Statement of changes in fiduciary net position. These were additions, which are the revenues that came in, which are property tax and interest, and then a deduction, which is ROPS payments on obligations of bond and city loans. So, we started the year with a negative $26, almost $27 million and because of the payments that were done, we ended the year with $21 million. That's a negative. And we like to thank all the departments, including finance, for all the help that they offered and for their assistance.
Any questions, Council?
I had a couple of questions. On, I'm trying to compare the report on page 10, which basically summarizes pretty easily our revenues and expenditures for last year. And I'm looking on the audit report on pages 140 to about 143, which kind of summarizes a 10-year gap. And I'm having a hard time trying to come up with in the report, a simple explanation of what was our revenues and expenditures in 2008. I wonder if someone can help me with that.
Can you repeat the question?
Okay. I can see fairly clearly where our revenues and expenditures are, but I'm trying to look at your tables on pages 140 to about 145 and come up with the same identical number as far as, I want to know what our revenues and expenditures were in 2008.
If you look, those pages are for the city overall.
Correct.
This slide is for the general. This slide is for the general fund.
Correct.
If you look on page, page eighty-one.
Okay.
The middle, or the, the center, there's, I'm sorry. The column that has actual amounts, that's where these numbers came from. So the eighteen million is...
True, no, 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 I understand that. I'm trying to find what are the act, maybe, maybe the tables I'm referring to may not give us that information. But I would like to know what our expenses and revenues were in 2008. Since the audit seems to compare ten years' worth of information, I want to be able to, be able to look at your report and get those numbers. Maybe the auditor might have an answer for that?
I can...
Where to find the 2008 information?
Correct.
That would be the 2008 calendar.
Just for the general fund.
Yeah.
So it's not in this report, is what you're saying? I follow you.
This is just 2017 information, so you'd have to refer back to a prior year.
Okay, so I guess if I want to know the exact numbers, I have to ask you guys to look at a little more carefully into your...
We can print you a report to have that comparison.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
I have two or three questions. One is, let's see. On page twelve of your presentation, we talk about Loma Linda connected communities. And we're spending a lot of money on connected communities. I'm wondering if we can kind of get an update, and I don't know, Conrad, if that would be you. But our cost differential was about ninety thousand dollars less this year than last year. Where are we at with that? Because I still get contacted by constituents that are asking about fiber optic wire and so forth. And I'm telling them this is for businesses and...
It is primarily business, business-related. The residential component never really took off. It was based upon, you know, greenfield construction, which in 2007 pretty much stalled and, and really driven by small lot development, which is never going to happen. So we're primarily business-to-business type connection. There is residential to places that have that. We are still in negotiation to offload that to a private contractor. We've got a couple of points, essentially just, and the sticking point now is, any new construction that has to happen, who owns it? And how that, how's that going to be dealt with? And so we, we should have some results fairly quickly on that. And... Alliedelisys, and they, they were never able to put all their pieces together. It's such a big company, they had so many different divisions, and each division wanted part of that contract. And for, for us, we just want one guy to deal with, not multiple divisions and not being able to track the revenue stream. So...
So when we spend, I guess, two questions related to that, when we're spending six hundred to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what are we paying for? Is there maintenance on the...
There's maintenance and service, some labor, and part of that is there are a lot of electronics that have maintenance contracts. So when they break, we, you know, repair and break, fix stuff. And then a big part of it is we resell bandwidth. So we basically buy internet in bulk and then resell it in smaller chunks.
To businesses?
To businesses and to residential customers, so, yeah.
And, and so what is the net revenue versus net expense impact on, on this? In other words, if, if our budget for last year was six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, and seven hundred and fifty the year before that...
On, on the expense side.
On the expense side, right.
Um, we're...
What, what revenue offsets that?
Revenue comes in from monthly subscription, data, leased line connection. There's a revenue stream tied to that. Are you asking, are we losing money?
Yeah.
Probably a little bit, not, Diana can help me in.
The, the Loma Linda Connected Communities Fund still has some cash in it that it was reserved. A bulk of the expenditures, the negative six hundred and sixty-two thousand, about five hundred and sixty thousand of it is accrued interest on loans from the former successor agency. So that's a non-cash item. It just, it, it just adds to the existing loan. And plus, there's depreciation of about a hundred and seventy thousand. So those are non-cash items. So cash-wise, it still has some money that it's, we're using for operations, but eventually that will run out to cover those expenses if it continues in that negative position.
We're still in the negative, but we're not hemorrhaging like we were seven, eight years ago.
So what, what are we projecting will be different five years from now?
There will be a private operator running the, who essentially then will be buying the bandwidth, maintaining the equipment. And if they can generate a revenue stream, then we will, we will recover some of that revenue. Hopefully they can. And if they cannot, at least we've offloaded the expenses and onto somebody else that's going to try and make that system work.
And is our situation with this technology pretty similar to other cities? Or are we kind of in a mobile of our own?
We've always been kind of a unique world on that. Some of the really early adopter cities have, have pulled up stakes, folded into other multiple jurisdiction groups. You know, Riverside was an early adopter, they, they pulled out. Some of the cities back east are in partnerships with private providers. You know, our Verizon and AT&amp;T and Time Warner were not interested in that. We've approached them several years ago on that. And, you know, a lot of them have essentially ended up where we are, is shifted this into some other private, private entity that really is able to create an amalgam of multiple small operations and make sense out of it. It really is just too small to carry the, the, the equipment carrying cost and the overhead for, for what we have here.
So my final question on this issue is, is are we pretty comfortable with where we're at? Or is there any action that the city council should consider taking as we strategize for the future needs and use of technology?
Where, where we are now with the connected community, I, I think we're okay. And we, we have a little bit of breathing space, we're working on the contract. You know, if we can bring back something reasonable, the council to approve it would be the big step. But as far as us throwing any money or any resources at it, that, I don't think that that's a, a, a good use of our, our resources.
Okay. Thank you. Two other more simple questions, I think. On page eight, we identified an extraordinary item to the tune of twenty-eight million eight hundred thousand dollars. Can you just tell me what that is? It's an extraordinary amount, I just wonder what's behind it.
And that was last year, in last year's audit. When we settled with the Department of Finance over the loans that were previously issued out of RDA and then re-entered into as a successor agency, we had to put those back on the books. So that created this one-time extraordinary item.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. And then on page ten, when we identify other financing sources, can you give me some sense of what is included under that umbrella?
For this operating year, it's mainly, it transfers in and out. So we may get special revenues, like, let's say, gas tax or public safety tax that we collect into a special revenue fund. And then we transfer them over to the general fund for operation, to cover the operations of the general fund. So those create transfers in and out. And then we have transfers out for, let's say, if we transfer to...
And, and those transfers are relatively consistent year to year?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, the gas tax and the public safety tax will generally increase depending on the taxes. And then the public safety is based upon a per capita.
Okay.
So...
Okay, thank you.
In summary, we have been in good years.
Yeah, we were... I should have just asked for the summary and we could...
We were planning on a one point three million dollar deficit, and we eked out about a hundred thousand surplus.
I don't know if it was that high. I think last year it was closer to two hundred thousand deficit when we approved the budget for 2017.
Yeah, but it was one point three million at the mid-year revise.
Into positive.
Negative. But we all had faith, Jarb could pull it off. And the finance team.
I want to thank all the department heads for their contribution and their assistance in getting the audit done, and especially my staff. Sonia works very hard, and she comes in on the weekends to get the audit done in time. And, and all the people working in, in finance kind of contribute to it. So, so I really want to thank them all.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, I want to say, I, I hear councilmen from other cities debate and discuss and, and all the problems they have with budgets and so forth. And I want to add my comments to what the mayor said. I appreciate what we do and, and the fact that our health, our city is financially healthy and well-managed. And so thank you for everybody, Jarb, throughout the whole operation.
Now, are we required to do anything to receive the audit report, or it's just a receive and file? Okay, so it's a receive and file, and we've got an item B under two, extension of time regarding housing authority properties?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When the state of California dissolved the redevelopment agencies back in 2012, housing properties were transferred to the Loma Linda Housing Authority. That dissolution law allowed the, the transfer provided that the properties were developed or sold for housing purposes within five years. There is the ability to extend that timeframe by way of the resolutions before you this evening to provide an additional five years to develop for housing purposes. After that, the housing authority would be required to sell any remaining vacant properties and deposit those proceeds into the housing funds. For Loma Linda, the vacant properties were transferred on November nine of 2012. These resolutions would extend that timeframe to November nine of 2022. The list of vacant parcels in the exhibit to the resolutions includes properties previously referred to as the scattered sites. There's properties on Evan Street, Lind, Palm Drive, Poplar, and Mountain View Avenue that are in the process of sale by way of an existing agreement with Mary Erickson Community Housing, as well as the six lots, six lots on Juanita Street to be developed by Mary Erickson Community Housing with the proceeds of the sale of the scattered sites, along with other sources of funding. Also included on that list is vacant property on Poplar Street for Phase Two of the Affordable Senior Housing Project. The developer holding the entitlements for the Phase Two site is continuing to look for additional financial assistance in order to make the planned affordable project feasible. So it is recommended that the Housing Authority Board adopt Housing Authority Bill R. 2017-04, requesting the city council extend the timeframe under the relevant Health and Safety Code sections, and that the city council adopt Council Bill R. 2017-38 approving that extension. Thank you.
Let's do it.
These are basically the same motion for the two bodies, they can be taken together.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Is there any opposition to the motion? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. Our next item is item three, a public hearing that requires invocation of the rule of necessity.
Mr. Mayor, as our practice on matters involving the University and Medical Center, where the four councilmen have previously declared a conflict based upon income or employment, I've prepared the normal sticks, two of which are marked for participation. I will distribute those at this time.
That's one participant.
Uh-huh. No vote.
Okay, good evening, council members, members of the public. My name is Lorena Materita, I'm the Associate Planner for the City of Loma Linda. And tonight I will present a total of six different comprehensive sign programs for Loma Linda University. You might recall, a year and a half ago, the applicant Curtis Sharp was here, presenting a potential sign program for arrival and gateway signs that were to guide visitors to major endpoints throughout the city. After that presentation, we realized there was a great need to get our sixty thousand daily visitors to move more effectively to their desired destination, which in our case, visitors typically go to the university, the VA, or another medical-related facility. So it was decided that Loma Linda University not only planned for the arrival signs in the public right-of-way, but also proposed other sign programs at other key locations to ensure the coordinated exposure for all facilities and to enhance the effectiveness of the signs throughout the campus and city. In these next few slides, I will briefly discuss each sign program. Ultimately, all fall under the LLUH sign program umbrella. I want to also note that these proposed signs span across multiple land use designations and zones. Due to the type of proposed project, the code required the applicant submit comprehensive sign programs. With these programs, we can, also, we can establish sign criteria and regulatory guidelines for the installation of any sign. The first program I'll discuss is for monuments. The applicant has identified twenty-five key locations throughout the campus. These freestanding structures will be installed at entrances of businesses and institutional buildings. Some of these monuments already exist, but will be part of the program in case a future applicant comes along the way and wants to make changes to the signs. If that's the case, at that time, the applicant would need to comply with the guidelines said in the program. Monuments will be of aluminum material with double-faced cabinets, eternally illuminated, though range from four to seven feet in height. Signs will have a logo, building name, and address. Some will include public art with a wellness theme. And within the program, there will be room to allow LLUH to upgrade signs to better communications as technologies advance. For example, the static sign cabinet face could be replaced with a digital LED messaging system if the need arises. The second sign program is for the university's forty-nine parking lots. You can imagine how many signs we might find throughout this expansive parking system. But the applicant has done an excellent job planning for existing and future signs at these lots, all the while avoiding the possibility of creating sign pollution. He has done this by creating guidelines and a formula for calculating the number and maximum signs per lot, and where they're allowed to be installed within the lot. Within these illustrations are signs that you've approved in, in the past and probably have used while visiting the campus. The program will ensure that existing and future signs continue with the same look and sign type. Each will be aluminum, double-faced, and non-illuminated with anti-graffiti coating. All signs will be approximately seven feet in height and have the ability to install a magnetic overlay for temporary event parking. The next program is for the future medical center. All signs proposed in this program are to enhance the visibility of the center and to provide the community and emergency vehicles safe passage to the site. Sign types will include building identification, monument, and directional vehicular signs. These images depict what the signs will look like. All proposed signs will be relative to the size of the parcel and building. They will be aluminum and eternally illuminated, with the exception of the window signs and parking lot signs. Together, the signs will help identify the center from a distance and clearly identify any special entrances to the facility. The fourth sign program is for the Campus Plaza Shopping Center. The site encompasses several parcels with multiple businesses like Loma Linda Market that brings heavy traffic on a regular basis. For those reasons, we recommended Mr. Sharp submit a comprehensive sign program. The program will meet the needs of the center's tenants, the university, and the community in general by promoting consistency among all signs throughout the center. Sign types identified in the program include illuminated monuments at the main entryways, directional signage, blade, under canopy, and hanging signs throughout the center. Also listed in the program are existing signs and the ones that will be replaced to stay consistent with the proposed theme for the center, as shown here on the slide. So if you see right there on the right, that monument directional Campus Plaza sign will be replaced with a new, more up-to-date monument sign. And let me know if I'm going too fast. The fifth sign program is for the existing and proposed university parking structures and bridges. There will be a maximum of 26 signs between the four parking structures and three bridges. Types include building wall signs, overhead and exterior identification, and monument signs that you normally see when you enter a structure. The program will lay out the guidelines for the height, size, color, lighting, and location requirements for each sign. All signs are uniform and will follow the same architectural theme with the other LLUH signs. Here we see illustrations of existing signage at parking structures P2 and P3, which you approved last year, as well as the bridge at Stewart Street, which was completed several years ago. Like I stated, this program lays out the existing and proposed signage. So when the new medical center is built, both the city and future applicant will have these guidelines and standards to adhere to for the future P4 and the third bridge. And as with any construction in public right-of-way, the bridge sign will require public works review and permit approval also. Okay, the sixth sign program. I saved this one for last. It is the Arrival Sequence and Districting Sign Program. And I saved it for last because it includes a lot more details than the other programs. For the past 18 months, staff has worked diligently with Mr. Sharp to ensure that we were proposing a program that would not only benefit the university, but our community residents and 60,000 daily visitors as well. This has been a collaborative effort between the university, City Hall, and the VA, in the hopes to create a sense of arrival within the city. Content on the signs will identify the major organization found along the arrival pathway and orientate the motorists that they have arrived to their endpoint destination, whether it's the main center of the campus, the ambulatory care center, or City Hall. This program is not site-specific, but district-specific, with the majority of the signs in the public right-of-way. There are five sign types, and they're right there at the top in the top banner. They include threshold, over-road directional, gateway element, which is a traffic signal, vehicular directional, and banners. Threshold, gateway, and banners, those three types give a sense of where you are because of the branding that will be displayed on them. The other two, the over-the-road and vehicular directional signs, give specific directions to a destination. The signs indicated in the program will not all go up at once. The applicant has identified three phases within a 20-year vision. Signs will go up on, based on needs. Some signs might never be installed, but nevertheless, the program will serve as a roadmap for future changes as the three major entities grow within Loma Linda. For signs in public right-of-way, districting has been established based on the entity's presence throughout the city. LLUH and the VA make up the two house districts, and they bring in the most commerce and have the largest impact on traffic flow. Their logos will define the district, and more importantly, serve as a functional element of reinforcing a sense of awareness in relation to end destinations. The city, university, and VA can build signs at the locations identified in this sign program. The branding rights on the signs, however, are based on the map and where signs are located within the two districts by path of travel. Red represents the university district path of travel, and blue represents the VA and its path of travel. So then if you were driving on a area highlighted in red, then that's probably because it's going to take you to the university.
May I ask a question just about what you just presented? I mean, I like the way that the VA and the university slash medical center are integrating the directional signs. I'm assuming then that, since this is a proposal from Loma Linda University Health, that the VA has also had input and is engaged with this process as well?
Yes, the applicant has been in communication with the VA, and I'll address more who's going to fund it, but most of the funding for all the signs will be by the university. And I think Conrad wanted to expand.
So, yeah, there has been discussion, not just between the applicant, but with the city as well, the VA. Obviously, it's a financial issue for them.
Sure.
But we've designated places where if you're going to come down this path, you're probably going to the VA. So as the funding becomes available, that's where the VA signs are going to go.
Becomes available from the VA or from the Loma Linda?
From whatever entity is providing the funding. The concept is, and kind of on a real high level, is like if you're going to Disneyland, all the signs are very clearly... Well, we go to Disneyland and Knott's Berry Farm in the same city.
Yeah.
VA and the university. So we need those signs with very clear logos.
Right.
To distinguish. Now, which entity puts up its own signs is that entity's business. So I can't necessarily see the university putting up VA signs.
No, and that makes perfect sense to me.
I don't think the VA, at this point, has money for signs, but when it does, it becomes an issue. And, you know, there may even be a point where there's some funding for the city or through some grants or something that we can apply some money to that as well.
And this will, if I'm understanding your report, will also include directions to the city office?
Correct. Yes.
Yes. So what will happen with each? So basically, we mapped out the location of where we believe or we'd like to see these threshold or gateway signs. And so if we're in, if any of the signs get proposed in one of the blue path of travel, and let's say that the VA did have the funding for it, then we would come and we would refer to the comprehensive sign program, and then we would lay out the guidelines for him. So what will happen is the main logo on that sign, a threshold sign, the one that stands out, will be VA. The city's logo will always be on the sign, and it will be at the very top.
Okay.
So it's pretty much between the university and the VA, and the city's logo will always be on top.
What we're creating is a consistent size, shape, lettering.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you can follow the logo, but the destinations beneath kind of break out to where you're going. But your primary track, you know, and this was, this was a lot of effort on the applicant's part and some other people as well, that, you know, the people that come to town are, you know, either distraught, in a panic.
Yeah.
Sick, on medication. And so we need to give as much, as many cues as possible. A lot of them are impaired legally or otherwise. So yes. So we want to give them as many cues as possible to get them to where they're going.
Is there any city funding involved in any of this?
There might be, yes.
Okay. I assume we have the money.
Yes, sir. I've set aside some money for it, yes.
Okay, no, I'm, continue. Thank you. I'm impressed.
The sign program also includes instructions about construction, permitting, maintenance. Signs will be maintained by the institution funding the sign, which will typically be the university, like we just discussed, but only the city will have full control of the traffic signals. And then there'll also be instructions for the sign's lifespan and the public art to be installed. The art used for the arrival signs will have a wellness theme. As noted in the staff report and better described in the program and conditions of approval, the art on the signs installed in the public right-of-way will go towards the medical center's public art requirement. Basically, it will serve as a credit towards the medical center's development impact fees. And lastly, and stated in the required findings, this program and the other five will provide a solution to traffic congestion and promote public safety by creating a seamless experience to the motorist in finding their desired destinations throughout the city. As with all proposed projects, conditions of approval have been generated. Most are standard, but because of the uniqueness of these programs, additional conditions were necessary. I want to also highlight something that was not in your staff report or, yeah, what was not in your staff report or the conditions of approval, but after communicating with the city attorney these past few weeks, staff is now requesting to add the following condition to be included in your approval tonight. Applicant shall, to the extent required by law, comply with any prevailing wage requirements for work done under this permit and shall indemnify, defend, and hold harmless to the city from any claims related thereto. Other conditions include public works requirement for an encroachment permit, and building and safety will require individual metering and permits for signs in the public right-of-way.
I have a question about that. Was there a particular reason why that was added?
In the...
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage. Well, a question was asked of me, and the concern raised that was brought to me was whether or not the credit for the public art might invoke the prevailing wage requirement. And I had addressed that in an email to staff, and as part of that email, I recommended that we include this condition, just to protect the city from any potential claim to that respect. But the issue of prevailing wages is something that is unlikely to come up as I interpret the ordinance on public art. But part of the issue and connection with that will be the analysis of the art that's brought forward later, and the permit, and the credit that's applied for against those fees that would otherwise be paid. But the way our ordinance is written, the public art impact fees can be offset or waived, so that it's not actually public funds that would be going into the public improvements in the street for the signs. And so I think that it's not likely to occur, but if it were to occur, that there were a claim, it should be the applicant that would handle that.
So it may only apply to signs that include public art, so to speak?
That's the only potential issue. The city's not putting any funds whatsoever into these signs.
So which signs would have public art, unless I'm missing it?
If I, if I go back, okay. So vehicular directional, banners, the monuments.
And the one that are in the right-of-ways, in the city of the right-of-way. The one that on their own private property, that's there.
Just about all of them. As some component will have art on the backside, art as part of the design element. So that, part of the idea is they're not just a sign. On one side, you're getting the directional logo. When you're leaving city, you're going to see this wellness art and wellness, you know, as part of the city's branding.
And is the intent that that art be temporary in the sense that it'll be replaced on a regular basis, or is this more permanent, similar to the bus stations that we have?
There is an attempt, and stop me if I'm wrong, Curtis, that certainly the banners are replaced on a very, on a frequent basis.
Yeah.
And there's the ability that the larger pieces of art, their vinyl wraps that have a shelf life, I'm trying to remember what they were, five years or so?
About five years. So at some point, there would be a natural rotation, just because the banners have about a year's lifespan, maybe two, where the vinyl overlays have about five years.
So there would be a constant kind of changing, so you're not looking at the same outdated image for 30 years.
Yeah. And I guess that, I'm going to dip to an agenda item I have under reports from councilmen, but when we talk about maintenance of this, maintaining them so that they are appropriately attractive and so forth, my concern is that I've been patiently waiting to see the median on Barton Road next to the surgical hospital maintained. It's full of weeds, it's the entrance to the city, and we've been down this pathway multiple times. So my question is, who tracks, who determines what effective maintenance of the signs are, and what's the, who has enforcement ability?
The city.
Okay, well, we're not doing a real great job on the median.
Yes.
And we, again, I hate to bring it up because we've been down this pathway so many times. And so the maintenance issue is one that I hope is clear and in writing, so that there's no question about it. Does that, I can't see you, but does that make sense to you?
I'll move over here. Yes, and in the sign program, oh, okay. So, within the sign program, we did list out a maintenance schedule. So we show that the main structures need to be painted within 10 years, the vinyls every five years, banners have to be changed out more frequently. So within there, there is a schedule. So as I kind of roll in each year and we're building more signs, at some point, we're going to hit a timeline where I'm going to have to put a maintenance provision in to where we're starting to address so. So as I submit each year's budget, there's going to have to be something that addresses maintaining the signs in addition to any expansion that we're doing.
But the process you're describing is all within Loma Linda Health, correct?
Yes, because, because, well, we will, in any sign we build through an encroachment permit, we will own and we will have to maintain those.
And that's, that's where I'm concerned, based on the median. Do you know the median I'm talking about on Barton Road across, on Barton Road right next to the surgical hospital?
Okay. I know roughly where you're talking about.
Where either...
Yes, Skier Hard responsibility, but...
Okay.
We have to call him every month, that's why it's not working.
And even then, it doesn't get taken care of sometimes until weeks and weeks. And that's where my concern is, is that we've had a troublesome past with the university maintaining what they have agreed to maintain. Either that or pay the city and we can do it. And that just has not worked, and that's been several years now. So I want to be sure there's some kind of explicit agreement between the city and Loma Linda University Health to be sure that everything is maintained so that we have an attractive, attractive signage.
And I understand. And that's one reason why in the sign program itself, I tried to put in as much detail as possible so that we would be accountable for that.
To, accountable to whom?
To, to the city, as far as maintaining.
Oh, to the city, okay.
And, and of course, whatever written agreement we have with the city staff, we will make sure that we have provisions in there that cover your concerns.
That's all I need. Maybe you can include this median in that new agreement you're going to put together, too. Thank you.
Well, Gerhart's right next door, so I'll be talking to him tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
How does this potentially change our welcome signs at the entrances? Do we kind of conform the city signs to the standard, too?
Which one?
Look at it. The city logo will be on top of each one of them.
I'm talking, you know what, the one on, at each of our main entrances, the ones that we, you used to...
The one in median's still going to be there.
Yeah, but are we going to change any of that so it matches this?
Ultimate, as they get replaced, everything will match consistently.
So we're not overtly go out and change them, just...
But just as they get hit, need repair, replacement over time. The idea is, is that when you, when you get to Loma Linda, you know you're in Loma Linda because everything is consistent throughout the community.
And looks good.
And looks good.
I like it. Cool.
It's an impressive proposal. I like it. We just be sure to maintain it. It's an impressive proposal. I like it. We just be sure to maintain it.
I had some further questions on the amendment regarding prevailing wages. So if I read that correctly, this is to the extent required by law, which means it's going to be a decision made on case-by-case basis?
Yes. The intent of that is to, because the city is allowing this encroachment upon the public right-of-way and the development and construction costs are being borne by the university, they would be the ones with the primary responsibility for complying with prevailing wages should they be required. Now, we're not saying they are required. We're just saying if they are required. And what happens in a case is that there can be lawsuits by workers' rights organizations. The city doesn't want to be responsible for dealing with that should this project of the university result in a claim.
Okay. I understand that.
They are receiving the benefit of our, allowing their use of the public right-of-way. But as part of that, they have to accept the potential liability. We're not saying that there is liability, that there would be a claim. But in the unlikely event that there were, they would be responsible for handling that.
I'm still not clear on what triggers a prevailing wage legal responsibility.
Typically, it's any funds, city funds that go into the construction. And there will not be any direct city funding of any of these signs within the right-of-way. But the question was raised as to whether the waiver of these public art fees could be considered to be a monetary contribution by the city.
Have they requested a waiver of public art fees?
Part of the application included the concept that this public art component would be included on part of the signs.
I understand that.
And that in exchange for providing the art in kind, they would not have to pay the, some portion of the other public art fees that are attributable.
So what you're putting in there is that if they make that request, they may be subject to prevailing wages?
I'm not suggesting that they would be. I'm just saying that if there is a claim by some other entity or party, they would handle that claim.
So then my question is, who then directs them that prevailing wages must be paid on particular works?
Ultimately, the labor board or a court could make that determination.
But it's not something that we decide as a city?
No, no.
Okay. Just curious, is the applicant understanding this and in agreement with this new addition to this proposal?
Yes. Actually, I'm the one who posed the question.
Just want to make sure because, I mean, if that comes in, your cost of those signs can go up twenty, thirty percent.
Yes, and I understand that. And so, I mean, it's always important to be transparent. That's why I asked the question because I didn't want, and I didn't want to be in a position to go in back into leadership after the fact. So I'd rather ask the questions upfront to see what our legal position is. And I've also talked to our own legal counsel to see what our position would be on it as well. So I'm quite comfortable with the city attorney's response to it.
If there were a claim, it would be against both the university and the city. So it only makes sense for one of the two to handle the claim. And in this case, since it is their request for this encroachment, it makes sense for them to handle it.
So I'm glad you asked that question and you explained the offset and the development impact fees for the public art because then that leads me to my next slide. So basically, findings needed to be made for comprehensive sign programs and they were included in your staff report. What I didn't know is that in order to do that and provide that offset for the public art for the medical center, we needed to make one more finding. So tonight, I am proposing that we include this finding in your approval. And the finding is for public artwork installed in the right-of-way will be in connection with the districting sign program and the new medical center. The project will address the goals of the Loma Linda Public Art Chapter in a manner equally or more favorable to the city than would be achieved by strict compliance with said chapter. Applicant will apply for the credit for payment of the art in public places impact fees, otherwise doing connection with the development of the new medical center. Credit shall be based upon reasonable value of the public art included in the program as approved by the Community Development Department. So within the chapter of the public art, art in public places, it required that we make that one finding. Again, it's not included in your staff report, so I went ahead and drafted a finding for tonight. And in terms of the CEQA environmental review, all six programs are exempt and have been determined to not have a significant effect on the environment. So to conclude, because the projects are for signage, it is exempt from CEQA. The projects are compatible with the existing buildings and surrounding areas. They're consistent with the general plan and comply with zoning requirements. Findings have been made to support the approval of the programs. And lastly, staff sees these programs as a sound investment in infrastructure and management innovation. So with that, staff is recommending city council find that the six programs are exempt from CEQA and approve all six programs based on findings contained in the staff report and subject to conditions of approval, including the additional public art finding and the added condition in regards to complying with the prevailing wage requirements. So that concludes my presentation. I am available for questions, and so is Mr. Curtis Sharp. Did you guys have any more questions?
I had some general comments and suggestions, but I don't know if that's a good time. I like the fact that it's very flexible in the sense that the decision about where to put the signs is going to be made over time depending on what gets built. One of the suggestions that I have, and I don't, technology changes a lot. This may not even be an issue, but it's just something to consider. I noticed tonight, for example, that traffic off of Tipicanue around between four-thirty and five-thirty was backed up all the way over the bridge. And I thought we had resolved that. I'm not sure what's causing it, but clearly, it's like really, really bad. Having said that, it would be great to have signage perhaps in the parking lots that may be able to direct folks to avoid Tipicanue and maybe to take Barton Road down to California. Now, California over time is going to be improved. Possibly. I didn't go on that side to see what it looked like. But I know that over time, as development happens on California, that's going to become a four-lane road. And I know that we're about to redo the intersection at California, which really is going to improve that stoplight there. So those folks, I know sometimes Waze and some of the programs are smart enough to tell you which way to go. Not always. I'll give you a quick example. I had to go to DMV today in San Bernardino because the one in Redlands didn't work. And Apple Maps told me that the fastest route was to take the freeway and it would be nineteen minutes. But if I take the side roads, it would be an extra two minutes. Well, I went the way that I'm used to going and I got to my destination in fourteen minutes. So the computers are not always accurate about saving time. But in the interest of trying to help improve traffic flow in the city, if there's a way to take advantage of these signs to perhaps educate folks as they leave work that it's in their best interest to avoid Tipicanue, maybe go down Barton Road and get back on the freeway. Because what's happening now is our freeways are getting so impacted. And even though they fixed that intersection at Tipicanue, so many cars still get through that intersection that people are backed up coming back from San Bernardino and Loma Linda. So just because you got to the freeway, doesn't mean you get to the freeway. It's going to take you a while to go through the off-ramp. So maybe going down Barton Road and getting onto California back on the freeway will avoid the traffic that's already back to the freeway. So anyway, something to consider. Things will change over time. We're trying to work hard to improve Mountain View and California, but hopefully it'll help improve circulation. And these signs may provide another tool to help with that process.
I think we have a partial solution already. So on the over-the-road signs, we have an LED display that's at the very bottom. And it'll, it'll, it'll display a four-to-twelve inch letter across the twenty-five-foot panel at the bottom. So the question becomes, we actually have a display to communicate road conditions. But what we'd have to probably do is tie in the technology portion as far as how do we, how do we put the updates? But we actually have a sign that can display the information. And that, and it's actually, each sign will have a cellular phone in it, which will allow us to update information. So it really comes down to probably even talking to the parking department. I'm not sure who's going to end up managing those LED displays at the bottom of the signs, but there's a potential to address your question.
But in my case, that will help. However, by the time they get on the bridge and see it, it's too late. They're already in traffic. So if they can figure out a way to avoid getting there when they leave the parking lot, so.
Okay. Well, and if we could, at some point, update the monument signs.
Exactly.
As you'd mentioned, because, and that was, I think, the purpose of putting the technology piece in there because that would give us more flexibility down the road. And now you've given us another idea to consider. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Comment to, a couple of questions. First of all, I want to compliment you for a very, a very effective proposal. And I think that this whole thing is going to be very attractive and enhance the city, and I'm excited about it. One question is, what's your estimated timetable for implementation?
Well, once we get approval tonight, I need to submit the budget revisions to Kevin Lane. And at that point, I've gotten about eighty-five percent of the project bid out. So the hopes is that we can move on phase one in February. And it'll probably be a six-to-seven month build-out. So by summer, we should have the first wave of signs up going around, up Anderson, all the way up to Barton Road, and we should have them going across Stewart Street, all the way up campus to Barton. And so we'll have the major framework of the infrastructure in. And as we roll into other phases, we could either do a large phase or we could look at it as more like infill and kind of decide how we want to plug in signs to go the other direction. Like from Barton Road going down campus north into the heart of the campus, the other direction. So, and that's why we built the program to where it would be based on current needs. So even though we earmarked other areas, we may not use those for several years, so they may not be needed. And so we kind of built it on demand, but we do have a very solid five-year proposal. Trying to get things up Anderson and to, up and around Campus Street and also down Barton Road towards East Campus area, right, right over here by the Civic Center.
And in your work with the, or communication with the VA, do you have some sense that, I mean, that's a federal institution?
What the city tries to do is use their design and build the sign on the west part, east part of town.
Okay. And the VA is going to be able to kick in and get their signs up?
I will try, but...
Don't hold your breath.
Yeah. The, well, I've been to a number of VA facilities and they're typically, the signage is quite good, is my experience, so hopefully they'll come through.
Their issue is spending money on off-site signage. They're onsite, they can...
Okay, okay.
But what's interesting is, in having a conversation with them, now that they have ambulatory care down off of Redlands Boulevard, now they're running into the same problem that our organization has when you've got two different facilities on opposite ends of the city. They're, and they have, they're having a hard time getting people to the pharmacy and other locations. So I have a feeling that they'll probably be following, following the path that we're taking as they continue to run into these challenges.
Good, good. The other question, simple one, is I know with the old signage that they had, what do you call them, monument signs that they had, we have a lot of minerals in the water at Loma Linda and those signs began looking very bad after a while just from all of the sprinklers hit the signs and then you get all the mineral on the signage. Have you thought about that at all with these?
Yes.
Is it a different kind of surface so that the minerals won't show up as much?
No, I've given that great consideration, even after doing the shuttle stops. There were some, I had to go back and do some corrections because landscaping didn't put the sprinkler heads real exact. And so what I've done here is when I bid out the signs for the sign vendor, I actually put the responsibility and liability on them. Instead of me facilitating it separately, I'm incorporating it into the contract. So I'm making sure I have solid assurance that when that sign's built, that we don't have water broadcasting on the sign from any direction because water's not a good friend of signs. And even though it's, even though we're using aluminum and then we got the Lexan, which is a pretty durable product, that's one thing that I will be focusing on. And when I put out the proposal to bid to the vendors, that was something I was very explicit on. So we should have some assurance that that shouldn't be an issue.
I appreciate your comprehensive thought that you've put into this and the effective planning. My only request is you stay around for the next twenty years to help maintain these things.
Yeah, I don't plan on going anywhere soon. I've been here, well, it'll be two years in March. I really do enjoy working and serving the organization.
Thank you.
And it's been wonderful working with staff and the city on this. It's been a real collaborative effort and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And a nice presentation too. Thank you.
All right. Entertainer motion?
I'll move the item.
And I'll second. Does it, do we need any more clarification on the motion than that? The motion would include items A through F and the findings and conditions that's set forth in the staff report.
And the additional finding.
And the additional findings, yes, as presented to us as well and what's put in the staff report. Thank you.
The additional finding and condition.
And condition, correct.
Okay, I'll support that group motion. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. And I had one quick question since we voted for this. Speaking of signs, who's responsible for the auto sign by the freeway?
It's a joint ownership. Typically, Spreen does most of the regular stuff and then the city does upgrades. Sorry, Quaid does the regular maintenance, the city does upgrades, and Spreen pays part of that.
Okay. Because it has been, oh, I've seen it like completely dark at night. They don't want to advertise themselves?
No, we'll, we'll talk to them. What's happened, it happens a couple of times a year. The timer on that thing goes off.
I see. Okay.
Either the power gets, the power gets cut or with the daylight savings and whatever, so the timing isn't correct on them.
Is there something, because the sign is still kind of old and outdated. There's no, nobody wants to make an effort in upgrading it to a more modern sign like this?
We upgraded it about seven years ago. Gave it a full facelift.
I know, but it's...
It's probably time again, and it's probably time to look at something that's electronic.
Yeah.
The price, you know, at one point, we had a price of like about three million dollars. But that price now has come down substantially. Well, the technology's gotten to the point where it's cheaper. You know, you can get a TV now for a hundred bucks too. So it's something we should probably revisit.
Okay. And maybe we can talk to the, obviously, the dealerships to try to see if they can, it's in their interest to improve that sign so they get better exposure. So maybe they can help, you know, pay for that.
I'm sure we can discuss it with them.
Okay.
Last time, it was a redevelopment that covered that.
Yeah, I know.
Your sub-leader has not. I guess we can go ahead. We don't need, we don't need all five for the consent calendar. Okay, we have the consent calendar. Okay, there's also a public comment on item number twelve from Mr. Milford Harrison. So if you'd like to come forward, we'll talk about number twelve.
It's probably eleven.
Well, he put twelve on his request. Is it, I think you meant eleven?
I probably didn't have my reading glasses on.
Yeah, we'll give you eleven then.
Thank you.
I don't think you care about annexation of our street light benefit district.
I apologize. Thank you and good evening. Milford Harrison, appearing on behalf of my client CRNR, and simply want to say thank you to the city manager and the staff for their recommendation. We continue to hope that you're not having any problems with the service being provided and that you will contact me or other company officials if you do. Uh, the company really appreciates the association with this city, and it's been, uh, fun for me to work with them and to work with your staff in, uh, making sure that the transition was smooth, and that we, uh, are doing a good job going forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Incidentally, I will tell you that the digital board across the freeway from the auto center sign cost five hundred thousand to, to put up, and that's a two-face, two-face sign, so that's a big, uh, decrease in, in, uh, cost over what it was several, a number of years ago.
Since you know how much it costs, do you have any idea how much revenue it generates every month?
I do have an idea.
So it pays for itself probably in a few months?
Not in a few months, but, uh, definitely a few years.
Okay.
Very few years. Thank you.
Okay, so you have questions on number fourteen? Go ahead.
The, I, I mean, I remember we discussed this item before, um, but it just, seeing it stimulated another question that I have, because, um, Redlands, I'm sorry, in California, there's a whole development that's gonna be going in there, you can be there as well, and, uh.
Recently, I was, I don't remember the name of the street, but, uh, uh, Van, I think Van Louven and Mountain View, and if you go east there, some of the side streets, and I was stunned at how narrow those streets are. I cannot believe you could get a fire truck in there and get it turned around. I mean, it, it, it was a real problem, and so the point that I'm getting to is, since we're talking about the California-Redlands intersection, I wanna be sure that as that development moves forward, that we don't have little narrow streets that are gonna be a problem, because it's, it, it almost looks kinda junky in there, there's so many cars back to, is that a problem for you guys? You know what I'm talking about, I assume?
Yeah, uh, that, that community is definitely one of our challenges. It, it, it is challenging getting in there. We, uh, wanted to replace this ladder truck a number of years ago, uh, probably before you were on the council, but we did go from a, a three-axle, you know, very large, heavy ladder truck to a light ladder truck, which certainly helps in communities like that, but we pay on the, the commercial side for where we do need the, the length. But we, we have had to make some adjustments, and it's still, if people park on both sides of the street, it.
Which they do.
Which they do, it becomes challenging, so.
Yeah, so that's, it's just a comment. It really has nothing directly involved with, uh, this intersection.
It's funny you ask that, because I had the same concerns, and I actually met with Conrad, and I actually measured my own street, and we discussed about all the projects on California, what is the width of each one of those streets? And they said, they've learned from Mission not to repeat that, so they're doing every effort. The main thoroughfare is gonna be wider than the actual regular streets, versus everything in Mission is the same size, except for Mission itself, so, but, uh, anyway.
Well, I'll sleep a little better tonight, then. Good.
That, those narrow streets launched at least four political careers on this council. Okay, is there a motion on the consent calendar? There is, okay. I wasn't paying attention, but thank you. Okay, is there any further discussion? That's a different item. We're on, we're on four through fourteen. Oh, they're doing, yeah, that's, you're thinking of item fifteen, I think, yeah. But it's a, it's a noteworthy comment, yes. I think eclectic means, I think that's a fancy word for a hybrid vehicle. Okay, so items four through fourteen are moved, and second, is there any opposition? Uh, hearing no opposition, it's approved unanimously. Now, item fifteen, about eclectic vehicle charging systems.
I think it's a great idea to have eclectic vehicles in this.
It is.
As you recall, uh, government code, it requires us to adopt this ordinance or a version of it. Uh, in exchange for providing an expedited permit process for electric vehicle charging stations, the city i- is allowed to include a requirement for, uh, under certain circumstances, where there are specific adverse impacts, we may, uh, through this ordinance, require a conditional use permit. Uh, absence, absent this ordinance, we would not have that right under the government code. So I recommend approval, uh, waiver of, uh, reading, and, uh, as recommended in the staff report.
Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, and, uh, now if the clerk would, uh, read by title only and launch a roll call vote.
Thank you. It's titled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Loma Linda, Adding Chapter Fifteen Point Six Two to the Loma Linda Municipal Code Related to Providing an Expedited Streamline Permitting Process for Electric Vehicle Charging Stations." And my apologies for the misspelling on the, on the council agenda. You may vote. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Now we have new business, ratification of a certificate of appropriateness, and we have also rule of necessity invocation here, and I and Councilman Popescu will be recusing and leaving the room.
That's the ratification of the demolition. Certificate of Appropriateness.
Spa, Spa D, for the entitlement of Special Planning Area D.
No, that's the ratification of the, uh, demolished houses.
Sixteen.
It's the two the university took down on Taylor Street.
This is, um, de- demolition of two of the older buildings right across the street from the physical plant. They're more than fifty years old. Historic Commission met last week on, uh, Monday, um, had a hearing determined that neither of the buildings is historically architecturally or anthro- or, um, historically architecturally or anthropologically significant, and they don't really add anything to the city, so, um, the, the Historic Commission is fine with their demolition. Um, what we're asking is the council to approve the certificate appropriateness to remove the buildings. They did ask that if there are any, um, uh, unique architectural elements, doorknobs, windows, those type of things, that they be salvaged to the extent possible and, um, put back onto the market.
Second.
Okay, if, uh, first and a second, let's go ahead and vote on, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're gonna wait for Councilman Popescu, since there's, uh, uh, all of you are part of this. We're gonna wait for Ovi.
Yeah, Godovi. Okay, item seventeen.
As, as part of the development process for the, uh, former redevelopment property and specific planning area D, um, we're creating a, uh, a, uh, subcommittee of two city councilmen and two planning commissioners to work on, uh, direction for design and guidelines for the area that then will come back, uh, through the architectural engineer process, and ultimately through the, uh, uh, track map and approval process, just like we did for the, the property to the east. It's kind of a, a unique deal, where one side of this, we're the developer, the other side, we're also the approver. So to be in conformance with the Brown Act, we would like to have, uh, two city councilmen to volunteer to be part of this design subcommittee, to, um, uh, to work with, uh, a couple of members of the community, as well as, um, the planning commissioners, uh, Nicholson and, uh, Nelson, to, uh.
Nichols.
Nichols, sorry, and Nelson to, uh, uh, work on this. I believe we have dates set up for January ninth, January twenty-third, and February thirteenth. We will use two of those three dates, depending upon the availability of the, the members, and then we'd like to do the workshops somewhere between five-thirty and eight-thirty PM on those evenings. So if we can get a consensus from the council of, of which two are the guinea pigs on this, we, we would like to go forward with that. Thank you.
Is there anyone who's, uh, extremely desirous of serving on this group?
I don't mind serving on it.
I'll do it, too.
Do you think, do you think possibly the five-hundred-foot rule would come into play?
Only question.
From, from an ex, they, from the planning commission side, and even, even for myself on projects that are relat- you know, relative to property in the city, if you're within five hundred feet of the proposed project, you would, you would need to recuse yourself. So I, I don't know where you are relative to that.
It's kinda weird, because there's, there's property that wasn't, that's not part of it, that's cut out, that's directly in front of my house, so it kinda creates a buffer.
Is it a five-hundred dollar, five-hundred foot buffer?
That I don't know.
Oh.
Well, uh, the, the rule now is not a strict five-hundred-foot radius. Uh, there's some other factors that we'd have to take a look at. If there's a direct impact on your property, uh, even if it's just beyond five hundred feet, it could still be a disqualification. So we, we'd have to review that.
Go ahead and do the appropriate review, and then if, uh, Councilman Duper can't, you know, newly retired, I seem to have open spots in my schedule, so I could do it.
If you'd like to do, I was told. No, 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 why don't we just do that, so we can just get moving? You, you've got the time, let's do it.
Does anybody else wanna volunteer?
I value now, this might, this might cause.
I'm, I'm willing to serve on it, too, so I think there's at least four of us that are willing to serve, so it's not, I don't think any of us would arm wrestle over it, but.
Uh, keep in mind, this is a workshop, and it's not final action. Uh, in fact, um, there can't be any final action until it comes, uh, for the public hearing and the, the formal approval process, so, um, those who are participating in the ad hoc committee can, uh, do so in good faith and in open fashion, but, uh, you can't, because of, it's a entitlement, uh, you need to withhold your final approval until the appropriate time.
So does, is that, is that your way of saying all five of us could show up?
Um, you could in a workshop setting.
So in a workshop, so does.
Do we have to announce it?
Let me make sure I'm clear on this, because, so the ad hoc committee does nothing except listen? They don't make any recommendations?
No, they, they can comment and discuss, uh, it's just that you can't make any final commitment, uh, or take action.
As the council, but i- is, is the goal of the ad hoc committee not to give direction to council?
No, the ad hoc committee will give very specific direction to staff and to the engineering. Basically, this ad hoc committee is going to be the evil developers.
I, I follow you now. Okay, so not direct, okay.
It's a workshop setting, so it's not a, an action.
And then, then you will, when you're done being the developers, then you will come back and be the council for the approvers.
But does, would the attendance of three or more councilmen turn it into a Brown Act meeting?
Only if they participate.
Well, it, it's already, and I'm, I may have misunderstood what you said earlier. It, it is a Brown Act meeting that's subject to notification, because it's not an ad hoc committee composed solely of members of the planning commission, or solely of members of the city council. By merging the two bodies, we become subject to the, the notice requirements and agenda.
So then there's no, no problem with whoever showing up that wants to? But does that, does that somehow impede your?
It, it is open to the public. What we'd like to do is have two, two individuals to take the lead, um, you know, and then the remainder will be public, public input individuals.
If, if it's open to the Brown Act, then a workshop means that all of us could participate.
Yes.
It doesn't really require, and so, so to speak, ad hoc, it'd just be a workshop.
Uh, you could notice it as a joint workshop of the planning commission and the city council, and let anybody come who can make it.
I mean, if it helps the sake of meeting to actually have a structure in which there's a committee, and then people participate, meaning the council members can participate as an audience.
But I still think we need to identify two that will see it as a commitment to be there, because otherwise, things come up.
No, you're right.
At least in my.
And you don't wanna prevent, have a meeting because someone didn't show up.
Is it daytime or evening?
Evening.
This is even, we're looking somewhere between five-thirty and eight-thirty.
Because the dates, the dates you listed conflict with city council.
Uh, these would.
That would be a problem.
Nine-twenty-three and thirteen.
Those are Tuesday evenings, second and fourth Tuesday.
So they would then be before the city council meetings.
So it could be noticed as a study session at six o'clock before the meetings.
That's fine. Uh, what we would like, though, is have two, two individuals that really have the lead, 'cause there's, this is gonna be a pencil-on-paper type, um, very, very specific direction from.
Rock, paper, scissors?
Does it require function?
Dusty's interested, too.
Yeah, I, how badly do you want it?
It's up to you guys.
Because I will give it up if you want to be on it.
I trust the taste of all of my fellow city councilmen.
I don't trust that.
On, on issues of, of development, as long as I can make a comment from the audience, I, I think my comments would probably carry through the air, whether I were on the dais or at the, at the podium.
You, you will ultimately make comments from the mayor's chair, so.
Well, maybe not. You might take a while, but actually, you have to do it before July, 'cause we lose our, we lose our status on July one.
That is, that is why we're doing this, the, these dates in this quickly, yes.
That's fine, so my consensus is fine. Um, are you gonna notify us of the actual times?
Yeah, we'll, we'll let you know dates and, uh, one of the three, and we'll poll everybody and get times for it.
If it's the fourth Tuesday, there's a good chance there would not be a city council.
But he said that even if it was a city council, it'd only be like an hour before.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any, uh, oh, there's the city council meeting schedule? Are there any oddities in it?
Um, in years past, uh, the city council has modified its meeting schedule to address reduced staffing, holiday school breaks, and to accommodate and facilitate workloads and vacation scheduling for staff and city council members. Um, we've been retaining the second and fourth Tuesdays as the meeting dates. Um, the effort has been for items to be calendared for only one meeting per month, typically the second Tuesday. Uh, the twenty-eighteen schedule does necessitate two meetings in January, uh, one, the first one on the ninth, which is the second Tuesday, to accommodate deadlines for the resolution calling the June twenty-eighteen election, and another on the twenty-third to facilitate the bid opening and construction calendar for the California Street-Redlands Boulevard realignment project. The recommendation for the balance of the year is to schedule meetings for the second Tuesday, just reserving the fourth Tuesday should business necessitate.
And is this the time when we usually say that we are dark on, in August?
Not for a number of years we haven't, we've always had a meeting.
Okay. So, that's informational only? Or we, we're not voting on the schedule? Okay. Uh, any reports of councilmen? Any reports of officers?
Uh, very quickly, in terms of councilmen, I, I want to publicly com- compliment Officer Ortiz. Uh, we have, I've spent years on this council, listening to people complain about broken mailboxes and wire being stolen out of streetlights and so forth. Well, they finally found our neighborhood and, uh, I didn't realize all of my neighbors knew that I was a councilman, but I think they were expecting me to construct a new mailbox for them, but we're working on that. But, uh, Deputy Ortiz came out and was very friendly. He's been out several additional times and, and, uh, kinda sat on the street observing who was coming and going and, and, uh, he's been very informative and helpful. So, I, I just wanted to make note of that tonight, uh, so that you're aware of it. Okay.
I, I believe he was our officer of the year one year, about too long ago.
Wow. If, if he keeps up the job he's done for us, it, he's, he's well-deserving. And then, I already brought this up, but the Barton Road divider, can we be sure we follow up on that with the, I guess you're here and you're gonna follow up on it tomorrow?
Yeah, I'll, I'll follow.
'Cause I've been patiently watching the weeds grow and it's just time.
I, I, I take it he'll know what I'm talking about?
He, I'm assuming he will, yeah, okay.
And those who-
They usually go by, tell Ken Brier, but now I'm Ken gone, so now it's you.
That completes my comments.
Okay, under reports of officers, we have a parade of lights announcement.
Yes, sir, we, this is before you, last month, but now that it's right on our doorstep, just a reminder that, uh, starting Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday evenings, that, uh, Santa Claus may be coming through your neighborhood. Sunday, the northwest into the city, Monday, the northeast portion, and, uh, Tuesday, the south, south part of the city, and that's typically around dusk for a couple of hours, so.
Was that, is that going to be, as referred to, uh, by the mayor, Saint Bulwage?
It, it is, it is Santa Claus, period.
It's Conrad Kringle. Jolly old Saint Bulwage.
Did you not have kind of, the Santa kinda go through the neighborhoods already, though, in some Loma Linda streets?
Hmm, not our Santa.
Really? 'Cause that's, I had a resident say that they had it come by their house and they loved it. And they live in Loma Linda.
A year ago?
No, like this year.
He was an unsanctioned Santa, I don't know.
They said he was a fire truck with the lights on and everything.
San Bernardino was-
Well, where, where'd they live? Colton does it the first two nights and then we do it our first three nights.
But it hasn't been done yet, huh?
No, they just started today, I think, in-
I got, it was the barber and I got my hair cut basically, and he told me he lives off of Nelson and, um, Butterfield or something like that.
Maybe Santa was doing a trial run, I-
There was an article in the paper about San Bernardino City starting theirs, but I doubt they would've got that far south.
Okay, so. I wonder if you'll be selling ice cream products? I guess not. Okay, so the city council then is adjourned and we will move to our housing authority and finish that. We did the start of it. Are there any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any comments from the public on any non-agendized items? Saying none. Item number one was dispensed with. The consent calendar is there for your suggestions. Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Uh, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, no. That's unanimous approval. Chair and member reports, hearing none. Reports of officers, hearing none. That's adjourned. Next is the successor agency. Any items to be added or deleted?
No, sir.
Any reports from the public? Hearing none. The consent calendar.
I'll move it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any opposition? Hearing none. That's approved unanimously. Reports of officers, hearing none. We're adjourned. Thank you for coming.